I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, roll call, please.
Scott?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Davidson?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
McCambell?
Here. Okay, we got a proclamation first.
I have a proclamation, whereas the vast majority of the youth are concerned, knowledgeable, and responsible citizens, and whereas the accomplishments and achievements of these young citizens deserve recognition and praise of their elders, and whereas Optimus International has since 1954 developed and promoted a program entitled Youth Appreciation Week, and whereas the citizens of Burlington, Iowa have indicated a desire to join with Optimists in expressing appreciation and approval of the contributions of the youth. And now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of April 24th through April 30th, 2017, as Youth Appreciation Week in Burlington, Iowa. By this action, let it be known that we have faith in the ability of today's youth as they assume responsible roles in the future of mankind. Signed and sealed this third day of April, 2017, Shane A. McCambell, Mayor.
Sarah O'Field?
This is my first time.
Is there a young field?
Thank you.
Presenting the young kids who would like to ask?
Yes, thank you very much.
Would you please have a word?
Sorry, I'm a little short. The Burlington, West Burlington Optimist Club is recognizing the youth in our community, actually, our Des Moines County area. We had 67 students from the Danville, Minneapolis, West Burlington, Notre Dame school districts that participated in this year's event, and the top five students will be receiving a first-place award of $1,500. The two runners-up will receive $750, and the two runners-up to those will receive $500 each in scholarship dollars to be used at a college of their choice at a time of their choice. We are looking to expand that scholarships to further educate students by providing additional funds in the years to come, so we appreciate your continued support and that of the Optimist Club here in Burlington.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah.
Well, I guess what better we to follow that up than with a winner? Next, we have the Mayor's Award, and tonight, I am very excited to be able to give it to somebody that I've known ever since she was just a little tiny pipsqueak, and now she's grown up and making me feel really, really old right now. But you're a winner, and we're blessed to have you here, right here in Burlington. I'm gonna let you explain what, when you come up, I'll let you explain the award that you got prior to this.
Okay.
But anyways, be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your commitment to others, your selflessness, desire to make a difference in your community, and just being an all-out winner helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On April 3rd, 2017, this Mayor's Award is presented to Courtney Brinkley, presented by Shane A. McCambell, Mayor. Would you come on down? Just getting reminded, we clap for winners, that's what we say. She's a winner. Will you put this on your?
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And this is for you. Let me get a picture taken of you so I can maybe have my picture taken with the winner. Awesome. Would you please come and have a word for us?
Yes. First, I just wanted to thank Mr. McCambell and you guys for the award. It's a huge honor. I received it for becoming a state distinguished finalist for a Prudential Scholarship Award through different service and leadership activities I've been involved in. Basically, besides thanking you guys, I just wanted to thank my school, BHS, and my parents for all of the opportunities and support they've given me. Without it, I wouldn't be standing here, and I think that's about it. I hope to keep on giving it back, so thank you, guys.
All right. Just yesterday, you were striking out at softball, and look where you're at today. All right. Thank you, guys, for coming down. If you want to get on out of here, you guys can leave now. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll, and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports, and bonds. We have three resolutions. The first is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the 2015 Burlington wastewater treatment facility belt filter press room modifications. Second resolution is a resolution approving demolition nuisance abatements for various properties. The third is a resolution approving installation of temporary traffic control at the intersection of Division Street and West Burlington Avenue. We also have three hearings set for April 17th. One is being pulled. The first, consideration of plans and specifications for 2017 flood mitigation phase five. The second is a consideration of plans and specifications for the 2017 depot storm sewer improvements, and the third is consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with Martha Wolf for encroachment into Washington Street right-of-way at 313 Washington Street, Burlington, Iowa. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent? I see none. Counsel?
Did you say this one's removed?
Yeah, Your Honor, I'd like to pull under set date for public hearing, number one, consideration of plans and specifications for 2017 flood mitigation phase five.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve all items listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda, except for item number three under set date for public hearings.
Number one.
Number one. Oh. Except for number one.
Number one? It's like a... Kathleen.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye. Okay. This is time set for hearing for consideration of a designation of the Deer Point Estates Urban Renewal Area and on proposed urban renewal plan and project. Publications have been made in the hock as prescribed.
I'll go through some of the preliminary details of Ryan Nagarki that I have to hear as well. The urban renewal plan is kind of the first step in setting up a process to allow for the use of TIF funds. We are amending the urban renewal plan to include the area as previously going through the process of annexation and preliminary plat, which includes Deer Point Estates, south of Kessler Street, between 14th Street and Summer Street. This area, also, the urban renewal objectives as stated in the plan, to contribute to a diversified, well-balanced local economy by creating new residential development, job opportunities, and strengthening the property tax base to meet the housing needs as stated in the Des Moines County Housing Needs Assessment, by constructing new single-family residential homes, meeting the identified moderate-income housing price point, create a mechanism for financing the construction of needed infrastructure and residential development within the urban renewal area, and to generate funds that can be used to improve housing for low and moderate-income families throughout the city. This project is slated for 34 residential lots intended to be constructed in two phases. Phase one would be planned for 25 lots with approximately 2,250 feet of new roadway and associated sewer and water utilities, and phase two would be for approximately nine lots and approximately 930 feet of new roadway and associated utilities. The first phase is planned three to five years, and the subsequent phase after that. The amount of tax increment that's estimated to derive from this for the developer would not exceed $836,317. The total amount of TIF funds that would be generated would be a little over 1.35 million, with 520,000 of that going back to the city for low and moderate income set aside that could be used to benefit low and moderate-income families in the community.
What was that amount? How much?
So this first step is amending the urban renewal plan to allow for this area to be considered part of the urban renewal plan, which allows for the use of TIF funds as approved by the council as well, so I'll get this pulled up here as well. If you have any further comment, Jim?
Good evening, guys. My name's Ryan Nagarki with Midwest Realty Group. Appreciate your time this evening. Been here kind of in front of you guys since last December going over this project, so I'll kind of speed through the first couple of slides here. Deer Point Estates, it's a project that I'm proposing on the south side of town. It's 34 single-family lots to be off Summer Street and South 14th Street here, just south of Kessler Street. We envision the price point of these homes to be between $180,000 and $275,000. Several things about Deer Point Estates. This subdivision, it will have some building covenants and restrictions in place to make sure the neighborhood's a pleasant neighborhood, to blend in with the homes also that are to the north of Deer Point Estates. We will sell these lots to local builders here in town, growing the employment base, sales tax revenue for the materials they purchase locally as well, and also, this project will extend South 14th Street to help open up additional future land to the east for future development. Our goal is to break ground this spring. Last spring, in April of 2016, there was a housing study conducted by the Greater Burlington Partnership. Gruen and Gruen did that, and they cited that if more residential development here in the county is not facilitated, that the downward potential of the county, that could happen. Something I found interesting is that a third of our housing stock here in Des Moines County is 75 years or older with a median average value of $76,000. So it's kind of hard to grow your tax base without newer housing and housing at different price points throughout the community. There also showed a tight supply of homes in the 180 to 260 price point in that housing study that was done, and currently, they also showed that it's not feasible to build a house under the $270,000 price point. I'll go over that as well here in a minute. This here is a chart that Gruen and Gruen, that conducted the housing study they did, showing the future estimated demand of housing through 2025, and the price point I'm trying to kind of hit is this 180 to 260 range. Approximately 77% of the housing units here in Des Moines County, people cannot afford anything above 260,000, so the housing units that need to be constructed or developed in town have to be at that 260 or under. It also showed a tight supply of only excess of four units in that price point. This here is an example they put in the housing study that was conducted last spring, showing this is kind of a breakout of a 1,500-square-foot home, the different costs associated with it, and to get where they're at. So what they say here is land and site improvements for this particular house is about $20 a square foot. Your hard, soft, and financing cost is 140. Builder's overhead and profit was about $18, so a total of 178. Therefore, you're housing at 265 to 270, so it's hard to build brand-new construction under that 260 price point that they show. This here, I'm an upfront guy, I'm gonna show you exactly where I'm at right now on my bids that I've gotten on the development costs for the 34-lot subdivision. My excavation, sanitary storm sewer, storm sewer, excuse me, sanitary and storm sewer numbers are a little over $547,000. For the street curb and gutter, a little over $320,000, and your utilities at 150, engineering, surveying expenses. So a total with the land purchase of 150, a little over 1.2 million in investment directly related to that. I'll go over another slide that has carrying cost, your overhead and such to that as well. So my per lot cost is roughly at $35,815. I think we all know that if you get into projects, you always have cost overruns or the unforeknown, so. So with this, there are going to be some challenges that are faced. The housing study that was conducted last year suggests that land cost and the development of that are about 10 to 15% of the sales price of a house. So here in Des Moines County, you're around $20,000 on up to $50,000, $60,000 for newer lots in the most desirable location. Again, my estimated cost of 35.8, so if you take that 10 to 15%, and I just marked up the lot by 10%, that would encourage housing then from 262,000 to 394,000. So that's above what 77% of the residents in Des Moines County can afford that they So I'm here tonight, and as I've kind of made it known since last December, for an urban renewal request to basically help create a diversified, well-balanced economy for new residential development, create job opportunities, and to help strengthen the property tax base for the City of Burlington, I'll request enter into a developer agreement to offer tax increment financing rebate incentive. Basically, it's defined as the ability to capture and use that increased property tax revenue from my development and then rebate that back to me over the course of a 10-year timeframe at roughly at 60 cents on the dollar. This request does positively affect the feasibility of the project as I'm trying to hit that price point of 180 to 275, and it also encourages me to develop that land as quickly as possible. You know, from your standpoint, the cities, there's minimal financial risk to the city as that risk relies on me, Midwest Realty Group, as we're the one out there borrowing that money and doing that. Kind of give you an idea here of what that net effect would look like if I received the TIF rebate. This is a best-case scenario. So my development cost that I showed you earlier, about 1.2 million. With any business, you have operating expenses, you have carrying costs and such with the project, so that's estimated about $450,000. So the total investment that I would have is a little over 1.6 million. The estimated TIF, the maximum TIF that Eric noted earlier, would be $836,000, so my net investment over the course of 10 years would be $831,000. From a tax assessed standpoint, currently, the 11.77 acres is assessed at $32,100. My anticipation is that 34 homes with an average value of 220 would produce an increased assessed value amount of a little over $7.4 million for the city. Several years ago, the City of Burlington, the City Council, sat down and did a comprehensive plan. Within that comprehensive plan, it was noted to evaluate incentives to remain effective in promoting new housing development. The plan stated to make sure that the city remains competitive to other surrounding communities with it. I will note, to remain competitive, Minneapolis is using a program for urban renewal and TIF rebate. Mount Pleasant has a program that's using urban renewal and TIF rebate, and so does Fort Madison as well, and it's worked very well for those communities to create new housing, and it's actually within this price point I'm trying to accomplish as well. And also, they noted that provide incentives for roadway and utility extensions to open up new development, so you know, with this, there is a roadway extension that I would be putting in on South 14th to get to my development. You guys conducted last summer, in July, or excuse me, June, a goal-setting report. Some of the things out of that goal-setting report that the City Council did, you supported the housing study that I noted earlier in the presentation and identified that Burlington does need additional housing. You noted there's increased availability and flexibility of TIF funds. You guys saw that opportunity and also a concern for new housing development needs, the shortage of housing here in Burlington, and the lack of housing at all options and all levels. Currently, there is some housing in town, I'll talk about that here in a minute. Noted the high infrastructure cost for new residential development. In turn, it increases the sales price of those lots and homes. To continue economic development for the city, you did note as well to consider significant new programs, consider incentives for housing in the 150 and 250 price range, and again, noted again, the incentives for roadway and utility extensions to open up new development, and again, South 14th Street would do that. So what are some of the benefits to the City of Burlington? So, South 14th Street would get extended, as I've mentioned, to benefit future development to the east and to the south. I have a right-of-way agreement in place that could potentially help future development as well, that would go way south of my subdivision. It increases the property assessed valuations, therefore, increase tax revenue to the city. There's gonna be, you know, other fee income that's to the city, permit income, utilities, water, the sewer. It creates housing where there's a shown demand, and it helps with the economic development growth for employer attraction to Burlington, to keep people here in Burlington, and it meets the goals that you guys, the City Council, set forth last summer, and meets the goals that the housing study that they did that said we need this in this price range, and the comprehensive plan that was done several years ago. Community support. I have visited with a lot of folks in the community that support this project and housing in this price range. I've received a letter of support from Jason Hutchison, the Greater Burlington Partnership CEO, various realtors here in town, I've actually worked with several of them, and they're extremely excited about a project like this. The local recruiter for the hospital here at Great River Medical Center supports the project, and helping him recruit new people to town, he finds that housing is one of his biggest challenges when bringing people to town. There's housing, but if it's a younger employee coming to town, there's nothing in that newer housing stock, you know, under that 300,000 price point. Then I've had good conversations with a lot of local builders here in town that have interest in lots because there's no other lots for builders to come in and to build spec homes here in Burlington. I've always had the mentality, I was born and raised here in Burlington, about giving back to the city. Got a partnership, I'm working with the Burlington School District, West Burlington School District, and Southeastern Community College within their trades programs. So I'm gonna help educate our youth and our future workforce. I will provide several of the lots, four of them, one at a time with the materials at cost. I will finance those until we sell the house. The students, the faculty, they will come in and build those homes to gain real-life experience for the future, and when I sell that house, then I'm gonna donate half of the proceeds back to the school district. I think there's a lot of self-employed contractors out there that would tell you, one of our biggest challenges is educating the youth or getting qualified help, and when the Burlington School District did away with the trades program years ago, that really is being noticed now in the labor force, and they just started that back up last year, and so I've had several good meetings with them. They're excited. I know the city has talked about providing a lot to build for the school district, but their challenge is, is they've gotta have capital to go out and buy those materials to build that house, and so this would provide them with that money to expand the program because I know tools and equipment aren't cheap, so this would kind of help get that program off the ground and going. So in closing, I've worked with a lot of you guys since last fall, worked with a lot of the city employees since last August on this project. I've kind of taken baby steps, making sure that all concerns, opinions, they're addressed in a timely manner, and making sure that I understand when development, things come up, and I want to make sure that those got done, so it's been great to work with the city staff and everybody. With other communities around our area, you know, they're using the same program, and it's worked very well for them, so if Burlington, as we say, that it's a great place to live, work, and play, and if we don't encourage housing to be developed in this price point, then those other communities will become our bedroom communities, and then people will just work here. But, you know, also, on that education point, thinking that we're expanding the youth, getting them educated now. Another thing that I wanted to mention on that TIF rebate, you know, $520,000 over the course of 10 years gets set aside for low to moderate income. That $520,000 can then be leveraged and put back into our community over that 10-year period to help out with putting a new roof on houses or helping paint somebody's house, you know, in these neighborhoods that need cleaned up, and I think that, you know, helps lift all tides. And so I know there's other programs out there, tax abatements and things like that, but that doesn't provide a secondary benefit to the city. So I think, you know, with that, and with that, I just appreciate your support in this project, bringing it to Burlington. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Take some questions from the audience first, and then we'll... Get your name and address, please.
I'm Dick Dillon, 6341 Summer Street. My wife, Vicki, and I are, will be neighbors to the south of this development, and I have a question that pertains, I guess, to the city engineer, not here tonight, but has to do with stormwater detention, and Outlet A, shown in the diagram, is a detention pond, and wondered if it was big enough to detain the 100-year storm event for the completely developed subdivision, including all the street paving and sidewalks, rooftops, and driveways, with the release rate out of the detention pond of the five-year storm event for the property as if it were undeveloped, green grass like it is today? And I think this, again, is something that the engineer needs to address. Thank you.
What are our codes for development, Eric, when it comes to that?
Through the preliminary process, they're required to submit stormwater plans, and those go to our engineer. I'm not familiar with what exactly is required, but they do have to meet those stormwater plans, and Outlet 1 on this preliminary plat is designed to meet the stormwater requirements for a new subdivision of not releasing certain year storm events any faster than what it releases now.
I don't think it's designed to meet the 100-years-long storm event, but it's designed to meet the same standard that any other development would be required to meet within the city.
Yep.
Any other questions or concerns from the audience?
Leon Shahean, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. I guess, first of all, you put this stuff online, I do read it. I do have copies. As you well know, I have lots of objections to what you call TIF. I call it tax excrement financing because long-term homeowners like me get the wrong end of the stick every time. What you are doing is untaxing new construction and forcing that burden on taxpayers like me, my neighbors, who have older homes. That's just not right. Prior to the crash of '73, '74, when the developers started the new subdivision, they had to put that in at their own risk. Now we're, people like us who've already paid for that and continue to pay for that infrastructure, not only have to pay for the street and sewers in front of us, we have to pay for somebody new coming to town. I ask you, is that right? Mr. Davidson, is that right? Is that really morally right to do that to people?
You have stated your opinion. I appreciate your opinion.
Second, I want to go through your urban renewal objectives. Second, I want to go through your urban renewal objectives. Lots of fancy words, but when you look at it, first item, the primary objectives for development within the urban renewal area are to contribute to, and the last thing, strengthening the property tax base. If you're giving away the property tax revenue from the new construction for 10 years, you're not increasing the tax base. That's a lie. I just don't understand how you have been doing this for at least a couple of decades. It hasn't got better yet. You know, why is it we're giving money to millionaires to supposedly help working-class people? You want to help working-class people, lower my taxes, quit this eco-devo nonsense.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions regarding this development? Mr. Williams?
Larry Williams, 1567 Mason Lane. I'm going to charge with the other side of the coin on this. TIF in existing areas can cause taxpayers' loss of revenue, but this is a new area. We're gaining not a penny out of this land, so if we have to wait 10 more years to get the penny, I think we're well off. He's already indicated we'll get $500,000 in the next 10 years or so of that. So, there's nothing to lose and everything to gain on this. As far as the water drainage, I used to live in Navajo, everything in that land area drains the Summer Street, so he's going to have a road going to Summer Street. So if you had a 500-year flood, it's going to go down to Summer Street. We have crossover pipes to the other side of the highway where it would flood over the highway, and it drains into creek beds right by the airport there. So I don't think there would ever be a backfill or backup problem with the water drainage. Thank you.
Thank you, then.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any other questions or concerns from the audience?
Has this always been a 10-year thing? Well, I don't know if it's 11 years, 10 years worth. I think it takes 11 years to get to 10 years. However that works, I don't quite understand the language, but yes, it has been. Somehow I missed that. And does that say, does it say that somewhere in here? It's set up as an 11-year TIF rebate. The urban renewal language here is just for establishing the urban renewal district for those general purposes. The actual project would come... On the next thing, I know, but... So I was reading ahead and trying to find it, but... And in regards to TIF, you've used TIF on one other housing subdivision. I have never used a TIF for a housing subdivision in any community I've been in. Of course, I haven't been doing it much longer than what it's been since that TIF was done in Pheasant Ridge, when that one was done. I'm not a big fan typically of using TIF for housing. Most of the projects I've been around where they've done it were more like that last one we did, where we financed and had some risk in the game, though we did have a guarantee on that for a portion, at least a portion of it. The rebate makes it a little bit more flexible and a potential thing to use. I'm still not a major fan of using TIF rebate. Couple of reasons to talk about and consider it in this given case. One is the amount of streets outside of the subdivision that are necessary to be built in order to get access to that subdivision, provides that he's having to, he has a lot of stranded costs in order to make the development occur. So there is, and that stranded cost specifically on South 14th Street extension opens up a larger area for additional development occurred over time. So there is a purpose there that you can look at to consider. The other part has to be what you mentioned in terms of a price point in the housing study that showed that there's a shortfall in production in the market as it stands. If this is an incentive that helps you to achieve that, and you see that as a valid goal to achieve, filling that market gap in the 260 and below housing, there's good reason to consider this project. But, and I guess those are the two things that I could point out as being reasons why you'd look at doing something here. And again, I'm still not a major fan of TIF for housing, but...
Seems to me...
Yeah, this is counsel time.
We got an email, I guess it was yesterday, made the point, and I agree with this point. If we're going to do this for Midwest Realty Group, then the next group that comes by and wants to do the same thing at the same target rate, we've set the precedent, and so now we have to go ahead with it, it seems to me, because we can't say, well, we're in favor of him, but the next guy, we're not in favor of.
No, you're absolutely right.
So, I think there's a precedent that we are looking at here. That's all I'm saying for now.
Is the precedent worth setting? Yeah, I think that's what it comes down to, what, you know...
I think we have to answer that question.
Right, and, you know, I'm just, how much was that, how much was that housing study? How much did that cost? I don't know off the top of my head.
I was thinking 25, but somewhere in that neighborhood. We paid a portion, West Burlington paid a portion, and the county did.
I'm just saying, we did a study to get some information, and we've got information, and I guess that's, that's where, you know, you can figure, we have to figure out what the information that we've got is enough to say that this problem is serious, and this is how we address it. I'm real curious to see where...
This property wasn't part of Burlington City, correct?
Correct.
Okay, correct. So I think that kind of sets it apart from the possibility of other developers coming forward and saying, you know, I want the same things that Deer Point Estates got, unless they are also bringing more land into the city limits. I mean, I think that's a good point to, you know, always remember. Another one for me especially is that we have a local gentleman here raising a family, and he's not some guy from Nebraska or even Des Moines coming in out of nowhere who doesn't have, you know, a personal connection with this town, who doesn't have a personal investment of his own with this town. I think it says a lot that he's come here to us and wants to make where we're all living a much better place. I don't, I don't think it would set the tone for future unless they were bringing more land to Burlington, in my opinion.
I think the need for this housing and the price range they're talking about is well-established. I don't think there's any question about that. And by the way, I'm very impressed with what you've done as far as presenting your case to us. The TIF thing I'm not comfortable with. That doesn't mean, I guess, I'm automatically opposed, but to the people that buy properties out there, there's a tax rebate available to them, and I know that's not a direct benefit to the developer, but it sure is to the guy buying the house. So, go ahead.
There's no tax rebate available to the buyer of the home. No, there's no tax abatement.
Well, this means that if we don't do the TIF, I mean, if you just do the...
Yeah, if we don't do the TIF, yeah, tax abatement.
Right, that's what I'm saying, yes. So I guess that's what I'm struggling with, and I sure don't want to say anything that is negative, because I'm so much in favor of what he's trying to do. But, the TIF thing I'm not comfortable with, let's put it that way.
Well, I look at it, this price point with the TIF would be the same price point if you didn't do the TIF and they got the abatement, except the house would be, it cost them a little bit more, and so they did the break, you know, kind of a...
Yeah, kind of...
Looks like a wash, but I don't know if it really is.
Not exactly.
I remember it being a wash.
Tax abatement, you'll lose about four years if they're using a 10-year schedule, which is more beneficial to them than the three-year long-term, but they can get four years' worth of taxes abated on our traditional tax abatement schedule. The TIF rebate would be the equivalent of a little under six years. So you have a larger amount that goes to the developer, and it's, and you're changing the dynamics of the situation. A TIF, that's an incentive that's going into the developer's...
Right.
...cost structure to try to reduce the price of the lot upfront, reduce the price of the, of the construction cost for the home, the purchase price, versus an abatement that's going to the homeowner, incentivizing them to do the purchase on the backside. And, I mean, there are two different ways of trying to get a comparable issue. You're providing a little bit larger incentive. Again, you are seeing a developer who's having to, part of the reason that he's needing that extra incentive is that road construction that is opening up that area that's a little bit more than what a typical subdivision would have.
Talking two phases, I'll ask the question we've asked several times, does this start two separate periods?
You'd have two separate, you'd have two separate clocks. You'd run a, the first 25, is that right? 25 lots would be, would start on a clock that you would begin, I assume theoretically next January 1's value would, would see an increase in that base value, and the second one would start when you saw an increase in the base value on the, on the second phase. So you'd have two distinct time frames with each one. Each one would have its 10 years' worth of collections that would go into a rebate form to the developer.
Over the years, we've had difficulties at the 14th Street lift station. Those really have not gone away. They've been remedied some by getting people to take their sump pumps out of the sanitary sewer system. But adding this many more homes, is that going to cause us additional cost in the very near future to, to address that problem?
What do you have to say, Don?
He didn't watch it.
What I have to say is that I think it was in the late 90s where we were having difficulties, a great deal of difficulties with that lift station. There were a few homes that were being impacted as well. The city did an investigation on the collection system that feeds the 14th Street lift station. They found multiple problems. One of the problems they found is there was a development where there were quite a few homes that had sump pumps in their basements, as you stated. They sent a letter out to, I think probably as many as 40 homes, might have even been more than that, letting them know that they wanted to come in and investigate. They did investigate, they found a number of homes were properly piped, but gave the appearance that they had been changed since having sent the letters out. And so, they did succeed in removing some inflow from those sump pumps, which made a difference. They also found the manholes on the collection system along Summer Street. Many of the barrel sections of the manholes had water infiltrating in through the joints. They hired a contractor to go in and reseal those barrel sections. I also found a field tile in that agricultural ground that was tied into the collection system, which also brought in field, agricultural water, if you will, from the field, and they disconnected that. All those things that they addressed made a significant, had a significant impact in reducing the operating conditions at the lift station. Having said that, we still, now that was, well, 15 years ago plus, and when we do have rain events, and they have to be significant rain events, or if the ground is significantly saturated, not as much as a significant a rain event, we do have an increase in the operating hours of that lift station. There's been discussions about whether we needed to be looking into increase in the size of that capacity of that lift station, whether it be by increasing the size of the force main, or the size of the pumps, or a combination of both for future growth in that area. At what point that increase is necessary, I can't tell you. I don't recall the engineers having done, generated a study in identifying if we're going to develop this plot of ground, then we need to do that. Now, we did purchase some ground recently, I think it was at the start of this calendar year, from the owner of the ground around the lift station for that potential, where if we needed to go and increase that lift station's capacity, we would have the, have the space necessary to do that. But as far as where the breakpoint is where it needs to be done, I can't tell you. I can tell you we're not having as nearly the problems that we had 15 years ago before they went through. Maybe time to go back and check existing properties and sump pumps. I think that's an issue that's going to be probably considered throughout the city. The Hawkeye sewer system is separated, and yet we get a lot of increase of flow during wet weather events. That, part of that could be a need to look at the sump pump situation, as well as foundation drains, which I know you're familiar with. But, the flow going to the lift station certainly has the potential to be impacted by existing properties who may have sump pumps reconnected to the collection system.
So long and short of it is, is that this may exacerbate a potential problem there. I don't know that this site, this part is going to be the breakpoint, but there will be some, at some point in the future regardless, there's going to be a need to look at upsizing that. And as you're doing a sewer master plan, I think that was one of the things that we noted is we needed to make sure that we had an evaluation done of that, and build that into long-term needs for, on capital side for the sewer system.
That's, it's kind of sometimes put in my view, put in a cart before the horse. Next question I have, in the, of the LMI set-aside funds, does that have to be used for a specific project? Does that be used in a specific area? And specifically, can it be used for acquisition and potential demolition in different areas throughout town?
It can be, it can be used anywhere in town. It can be used for a variety of projects. I don't know about acquisition and demolition, but...
It has to benefit someone making a certain income.
So if you put, built that into a program that was specifically designed to provide housing towards LMI or a benefit to someone who was a low to moderate income?
More my thinking is, we've got neighborhoods that have deteriorated, and their homes setting unoccupied and falling in, and it would bring up the value of the neighborhood by just simply eliminating the house, and it's probably, in some cases, well beyond the rehabilitation stage.
If you sold it to a J. W. neighbor that met those standards, or sold it to someone else to build a new home on the lot that met those income standards, that would probably qualify.
It would be one that we'd want to talk with, probably to make sure that we were doing that appropriately, but that's, on the backside, we do have to figure out how you want, would want to structure that if you were to move through with this project.
The, we have a limited number of tools in our tool belt for providing incentives for development, and I feel personally that we're doing very, very well right now in housing development. And if the demand for this housing that's being development, being developed wasn't there, then it wouldn't be occurring. And there, there are one or two housing developments that are stagnant right now, that are, that the ground has been prepared, the infrastructure has been put in, but the houses aren't going up. There are other developments where the houses are going up just as fast as they can possibly put them up, so. All that being said, I think we're doing very, very well with the incentives that we have now. I think adding to finance... I think adding, uh, TIF financing in, uh, in, in this form is going to, uh, potentially increase the, the, those coming forward. We had a developer come to us last year that wanted to develop at the end of, uh, Launa Garden. And we turned him down because he wanted to shrink down the size of the lots so that he can make the project work. If he'd had TIF financing, or if it had been offered to him, or when he asked for it, if they said it was available and they had worked that out at that time, that, that development, uh, may have occurred. So, um, and, and he would not have, he, he could have had code size lots, reduced the number of houses in that development and made that work. Um, we, uh, there was a, another developer that sent, uh, counsel an, an email. And he has, uh, a rather large acreage on the south side of town. That was annexed into the town. He's a local developer. He's been here uh, all of his life. Him and his father, both done a tremendous amount of development in this town. And, um, he's, he's a little put out by it because he's, he's not been offered any kind of incentives other than what the council has approved and that I've supported all along. I just feel that if we're going to do this, we need to do this as a policy. We need to look at this as a policy and not as a case-by-case basis. Not pick winners and losers, so to speak. It just, this concerns me. I, I'm, I don't wanna discourage a young man like that who's, uh, put all this, uh, effort into this, but, um, I've gotta look at everybody. I've gotta consider everybody. All the developers, all the movers and shakers in town and, and what's fair and what we can afford. And, uh, Leon's been consistent about his position on TIF. I've heard from a lot of people the last couple of weeks that this is kind of the straw that's breaking McCamell's back. They're, they're, um, I, I went to a, um, I went to a landlord's meeting and there were several people that, that mentioned that. They didn't mention TIF. They were talking about tax abatements. They were upset with the, the, uh, tax abatement program that we have in place.
Oh, there are many people-
Pardon me?
There are many people opposed to any incentive, but I'm not gonna listen to them too much.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'll let you, I'm gonna let you come, Ryan, but, uh, I'm gonna let you come in, uh-
Sorry, I came in late. Stuart Judd, sixty-two twelve, sixty-two twelve Summer Street, Stu's Lawn Service.
That's not good when you gotta think about your address, too.
Well, I've got three of them right now. It's confusing. Six, I just bought the property next to my shop at sixty-two sixty-four. And I'm listening to all of these things you guys are talking about, and I've been out to my shop for thirteen years, going on fourteen years. The substation back there in the back, I understand, I am with you on the tax thing, by the way. And this gentleman talking about the, uh, the detention pond and all that, you know, and I'm all about city making money, all that. I moved out there to try to get away from the chaos in town because I deal with a lot of people, which is fine. But it's nice and quiet out there, so I'm not, I'm not with the production of your housing development or whatever. But it's gonna happen, 'cause it's just gonna happen, but I'm trying to talk about three things at the same time, so bear with me here. I'm not, yeah. I've seen water, the substation back there in the back, uh, many years. They, city's been working on it, and doing a good job. But I've seen to work, the, the piping comes down, straight down Schwartz's Lane, caps off at my property, inside my whole property line of my shop. There's a cap here, and then you go across the fence, there's a cap here. You go down, there's a cap here. I've seen times to where the water's actually bubbling up out of them caps because that substation ain't working correctly. Now, I know you guys got developers and whatever, when you do this building thing, structures, all this stuff and everything to make it right, retention pond, but that's actually, if you're gonna do it, I'm just saying do it right. 'Cause I've already got problems now with both properties. There's a tile. This guy was talking about tiles. There's a broken tile out there in the field. If you go out to my house out there, you'll see like a little pond out in the front yard. That's because of the tile. My shop has been flooded out four times because of the water drainage system that isn't working correctly. So I'm just saying, if you're gonna do this thing, do it right. I'm all about making money. I know what that's all about. That's great. Try to keep the neighbors a little bit away from you. No, I'm, but seriously though, you guys were also talking about, well, if you're gonna let this guy come in, then the next guy's come in, no, yes, no, whatever. Well, to me, you guys keep doing that. You guys are literally trying to push me out from what I just accomplished out of thirty-three years of doing what I've been doing. And the city already booted me out once from where I used to live. I'm not gonna move again. I'm sorry. I'm just not gonna. So bear with me. I'm bearing with you guys to do whatever you wanna do, but you know, I just, I, I can't leave again. And I'd like to have these things fixed around this property, 'cause you guys are creating problems for me with all the waterways. Is that retention pond really going to serve a purpose as far as not having a drainage issue? I don't know. I'm not a developer, you know? And plus, a retention pond, isn't that gonna hold like a lot of mosquitoes? Then you got diseases, infections, you know? It's just something to look at that if you're gonna do it, do it right the first time, you know? Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Alright.
Thank you.
If I may, I'll address several of the, uh, the concerns. Um, Mr. Dillon and Stu and Councilman Scott on the engineering side of things. That detention pond is actually engineered. Uh, the DNR has standards besides what our city does. The DNR has hundred-year flood standards. So that is being engineered to a hundred-year flood standard, um, to address those concerns. And then also, the reason you get water, Stu, is that ditch that runs along on the east side of Summer Street is not constructed properly. So that is part of my, uh, my plan. Yep. So the, the ditch, there's some ditch work that's gonna be done to help create, uh, water holding and, and to get that flow correctly. Um, as to my subdivision, um, I'm, I'm actually installing a, a, uh, you got sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and I'm installing a subdrain that would go behind the curb for everybody to tie their sump pumps in. It would then tie in to that, that, uh, outlot for the water detention. So to ensure, 'cause I know there was concerns on the subdivisions to the north that tied in their, their sump pumps to the sewer. So this will ensure that that doesn't happen, 'cause there's a dedicated line to each house for sump pumps. Um-
Hold, hold, hold on.
Well, we can't have a back and forth.
Um, so, so then, uh, you know, I understand, uh, the, the concern about having other, other developers come forward and, and asking for TIF financing. There's several things that, uh, that I think Asfurno said to hang your hat on last, last week, but, you know, you could look at the chart that the housing study did, you know, and there's a demand that they, they set forth of what's, what's out there. And so you could look at that, and, and mine's providing thirty-four lots, um, in demand, and so if there's other, that's covering, there are sixteen of them demanded, you know, on an annual basis, so I'm covering, you know, two years or a little more. So you can kind of look at that and see where that's forecasted out based on my development, based on future requests. You know, the other thing is that, uh, you know, the other developments that are going on in town, it, if you look at the price points of the homes that are being sold, they're at three hundred thousand dollars or more. And, uh, the price point I'm trying to hit, I think's a need in the market. The other developments that have been in town, and you'll notice they're mixed-use developments, so there's condos and single-family. The reason they do condos within those developments is because they, their lot cost is so high, so then you're getting two, two dwellings per lot. And so that market isn't my target. I want single-family homes for working families. The other thing, you know, is, is that, uh, I think, like I said earlier, is that, uh, working with the school districts to, to get that education piece, um, to help, help the kids, to help our future labor workforce here in Burlington, I think that's another thing that, you know, that I'm, I'm trying to do and accomplish um, through this, but, uh, you know, that's kind of my thing. And the other, the final thing I'll say is that, that the TIF rebate versus tax abatement is, there's tax abatements out there. It benefits the, the buyer of the home. And so if I, if I don't get this TIF, I've gotta go back to the drawing board and see if this project is, is feasible. And that tax abatement benefits the homeowner. And so then, as you see, all the homes that are on the market are three hundred or above. So that's right back to where we'd be. We'd be having homes in Burlington at three hundred thousand on up. And, and with this TIF, it helps offset those development costs to get homes built in this price point. And also provides the city money, which a tax abatement does not, uh, to help benefit the, the neighborhoods in town that need work. They need cleaned up. They might need a new roof. You, you, you know, we're helping out everybody in Burlington. Where a tax abatement, it benefits one person. So that's, uh, that's my, my feeling on it, so, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Ryan. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, hold on, hold on, please. Uh, are you guys satisfied with your, with your information moving forward?
I am.
If we get, if he gets there before ten years of eight thirty-six, it quits, right?
If, uh, the development should not be successful, the, uh, debt, um, could potentially be placed upon the taxpayers because it is a TIF debt?
No, there's no debt.
There's, um-
If you have, what ends up coming in, Tim? Uh, if he, say, develops ten lots and that's all he gets developed, whatever the amount of new tax valuation that comes in that would be potential to be TIF rebated, if that ends up being, with ten units instead of thirty-four, if that ends up being about two hundred thousand that comes in, uh, we would rebate that to the developer. Uh, any shortfall that he has is his. He's financed that on his own. It comes out of his pocket.
Does this not go against our TIF dip?
We do an annual appropriation, so we look at how much the assessed, increased assessed value is within that TIF area. If it's fifty thousand dollars of, in a, in a given year, uh, the developer gets sixty-one point, sixty-two percent of it, sixty-one point six, I think, percent of that amount, and we set the other side into that low and moderate income, uh, piece. But we count that amount, the, that we turn over to the developer, well, probably both, both pots, we count as debt and certify it as debt, just for that one year. But we only do it on the actual growth that's occurred. If it, if the growth isn't there, there isn't a rebate to give out and there isn't a debt to certify.
You explained that very well. Kind of the way I read it, the-
Okay.
Code, too.
So just before we, before we move forward, can you just give us the basic difference between the policy that we have in place and what we're, and what we're offering?
You're-
Or, or what's-
What you're, you're typically, you're using a tax abatement. Your, your typical policy for housing development in the community is tax abatement. And the homeowner is allowed to take, take three years of full value or a graduated schedule over ten, which would be about four years worth of taxes-
Four hundred and forty percent or so.
Which they're able to abate over that timeframe. With a TIF rebate, the homeowner is gonna pay all of their taxes, full value on it. A portion of that is gonna go to all the levy authorities to cover any debt service they have. The portion that's captured in the TIF, uh, sixty percent of it will go to the developer and forty percent into the low to moderate in, income housing piece. Um, that sixty percent to the developer would equate to about six years worth of tax, a little under six years worth of taxes uh, that the city would, would ultimately not have control of or, or get. So you see a little bit larger amount that goes through a TIF than what you had, this type of a TIF than what you have that goes through a tax abatement. But it's in the same type of a range of, of magnitude. What you've done is changed who you're giving it to, who you're incentivizing. You use tax abatement when you know that you have people who are willing to build a house at a given price, or whatever price you're concerned about. TIF is when you're trying to create, you're trying to attract developers to get the building done in the first place. And within that structure, you can say, we don't care what the, the development is, or you can say, we wanna incentivize a certain type of, of housing stock to get built, and that's what we're providing towards. It, it just has, it's a different mechanism to use towards, uh, some of the same goals, overall goals and objectives you have in mind.
So when, when I was trying to work my way through this, sort of, I thought, okay, the developer's getting something, but the homeowner's not getting that, that tax abatement. But he's also getting a house that's more affordable. In other words, the price point, like he's been saying all along, is somewhere that, somebody that can't afford maybe a three hundred fifty thousand dollar house can get a two hundred fifty thousand dollar house, for example. It, it's just an example. And that's, that's kind of the way I look at it, that, yeah, the homeowner doesn't get the tax abatement, but he gets a lower-priced house. So.
Excuse me.
That's the way I think, the way I think through it.
Okay. Any other questions? We're good?
We still have a public hearing open, and you had somebody who wanted to speak at it.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
About this development thing you guys were talking about, he was saying something about tapping the, excuse me, sump pumps into some drainage, whatever.
I had to do this. Let me have you say your name and address again, just in case somebody came in.
Stuart Judd, sixty-two sixty-four Summer and sixty-two twelve Summer, okay? If this guy's gonna develop this stuff, okay, and if he's saying that he's gonna take the drainage or the sump pumps and tap into this sewer line, whatever, drainage line, whatever, if the thing's done correctly, why would the people even have to have a sump pump? It's nonsense. I mean, I, I'm, whatever. I, you know, I'm just stating my opinion. As far as the, uh, what I'm concerned about, you know, I, I've got kids of my own. I got grandkids. I love kids. But if you ever been out to my shop, there's a lot of equipment and stuff like that. I don't feel like having a bunch of kids climbing over my fence, getting hurt, trying to sue me, all this crap above. You know what I'm saying? I, I, I just don't want that. I love kids. Stay over there. I got kids. Stay over there. Don't mess around with my property and get hurt and then try to sue me. You know, it's just not gonna happen.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody satisfied? Counsel, any other questions? Ready to move forward?
Motion to close.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
I have a resolution to declare a necessity and establish an urban renewal area pursuant to section four oh three point four of the Code of Iowa and approve urban renewal plan and project for the Deer Point Estates Urban Renewal Area.
Wait one second, Kathleen?
Before we go, can I just say, I'm inclined to support this, but I'm also in agreement with Mr. Scott. We need to have a policy that we can stand on rather than individuals and say, yes, we can do you, but no, we're not gonna do you. So we need to have, if we're gonna move forward with this in the future, we need to have some policy, as you suggested, Mr. Scott.
Kathleen?
Scott?
No.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, moving forward, we have an ordinance.
Your Honor, motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the Deer Point Estates Urban Renewal Area pursuant to section four zero three point one nine of the Code of Iowa.
Second.
This is the second step in a process for this of, there's three total steps. First step is, uh, we just went through is adopting the plan. The second step is, uh, setting up, uh, or providing for the division of taxes, allowing the use of TIF uh, to be used for this project. Uh, the third step, which would be at a following he, hearing, would be setting up a development agreement uh, stating some of the conditions for the use of it, such as, uh, the, the sales price restriction or, uh, timing on the project, phasing the project. So uh, this is the second step, and this allows for the use of TIF funds for the, uh, project- So this is the second step, and this allows for the use of TIF funds for the project as described in the urban renewal plan. But there's still another step at a future meeting to actually discuss the details of the development agreement, so. This is the, correct me if I'm wrong, but the second step in the process that allows for the division of taxes for the use of TIF funds, but there'll be a future meeting at the subsequent meeting that would talk about the actual development agreement, how are the TIF funds going to be used as far as placing restrictions on maximum sales price or doing the phases, what those consist of. So this just sets up the process to allow TIF funds to be used.
The best I can say is it used to be easier to do this, but people thought that it was too, it wasn't easy to understand, so they created more steps in the process and I think made it way more complicated and harder to track. In order to do an actual project, there's multiple steps along the way to doing it. But ultimately, they're all designed to get you to that endpoint of having a final project with a development agreement on the back end. You have to create the district, then you have to certify, create a structure to say, "We are willing to do a housing project," then you have to have the actual development agreement. So we're in the second phase of that. And I don't even try to pretend to want to understand the nuances of it. We just, I follow what the bonding attorney tells us to do, really, on this.
Well, it certainly is as confusing as anything I've ever done on this council.
It is. And ultimately, what you have to decide is, are you willing to devote the structure to what we've been talking about, to divert taxes into the TIF rebate agreement? These are all steps along the way to do that.
Any questions from, concerns from the audience?
Leon Shahean, eighteen twenty-one Mount Pleasant Street. Again, one of my problems, you talk about the nuances and the steps that are required. I don't think people understand what TIF is. Two-thirds of the money that you're using here is coming from the school district and the county. People grumble, "Well, why are my school taxes going up? Why are my county taxes going up?" This is why.
Thank you, Mr. Shahean. Anybody else from the audience? We're good?
Yep.
Kathleen.
Scott.
No.
Wilson.
Hi.
Davidson.
Hi.
Fleming.
No.
McCambell.
I'm sorry, you can, as you move forward with what you're going to do, where you're at right now would put a TIF rebate into not happening unless they were to have a desire to reconsider that occur. But right now, that would stop the process moving forward with the TIF rebate.
If we approved the first part, why aren't we approving the second part?
Because we have three no votes.
Or is this allowing us an opportunity to create some sort of standard for going forward and then coming back to this? To approve it?
This is going to shut it down.
No, I know. But some of you talked about creating some sort of a...
Policy.
A policy, so.
If you're concerned about doing that and you're still in favor of having a project, you can have that occur during the process of, you have two more readings on this. Would have had two more readings on this after tonight's meeting, and you have another development agreement that would have to be done after that. There's multiple steps along the way that that could occur. But you'd have to also be in agreement on what kind of policy you're looking at doing or what's your reasoning behind why you're willing to consider it. Again, the kind of things that I saw that made sense for why you would consider is you had a housing study done with an identified need of something that wasn't being filled, and this was designed to try to help fill that identified gap within that housing study. Now, you can't have a policy that says, "Well, basically, we know that we want to hit this housing price and have that go into perpetuity." At some point, your housing gap is no longer justified by it. So you have to have some process where if another project comes forward that's hitting some of the same things five years from now, well, do you still have a housing need? Well, you may have, you may or you may not. You may feel what you still do, you may feel that you don't. You may be in a position you're not sure and you want to have another housing study occur. So that's something that you may have a policy that you're saying, "This is hitting an identified need, but recognize that over time, those standards may change just because of the changing market or circumstance." Regardless, those aren't on the floor right now since you've already turned down the ordinance.
Unless somebody that voted no would move to reconsider it, since that was the first reading only and we still have two more readings to go.
Do we have, I can't remember if we all voted no, but does anybody want to reconsider?
Not at this time. We can at the next reading, though, if you'd like.
No, there is no.
We have to bring it back.
Yeah, this would shut it down.
No, not unless you vote to reconsider.
Did you, you said no, or?
I'm all set.
Okay. That's where we are, then.
Your Honor, remotion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Ganon Street and Whittaker Street right-of-way adjacent to the property located eleven oh four Ganon Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Mr. Tisland.
Second reading of ordinance vacating the right-of-way adjacent to property owned by Mr. Mark Brockway. This went to the Planning Commission on February twenty-second and was voted five to zero to recommend approval of vacating the right-of-way based on petition of the applicant, the applicant owning all property adjacent to the right-of-way and maintenance of a utility easement and access for emergency personnel. This would vacate Whittaker to the west of Osborne and Ganon Street, just south of the property of fourteen seventeen Iowa, with all property adjacent to it being, again, being owned by Mr. Brockway. Easements would be maintained, and if a gate is put up, the assurance that emergency personnel would have access through a Knox box or a Knox padlock.
Anybody from the audience, questions or concerns? Counselor?
Your Honor, a motion to amend. Motion to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Ganon Street and Whittaker Street right-of-ways adjacent to the property located eleven oh four Ganon Street, Burlington, Iowa, to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration, adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Ganon Street and Whittaker Street right-of-ways adjacent to the property located eleven oh four Ganon Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Move to the second. Kathleen.
Scott.
Hi.
Wilson.
Hi.
Davidson.
Hi.
McCambell.
Hi.
Okay, and...
Now, as...
As amended.
Scott.
Hi.
Wilson.
Hi.
Davidson.
Hi.
McCambell.
Hi.
Your Honor, a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling the alley running from Columbia Street to Washington Street between Front Street and Main Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Thank you.
Similar situation, adjacent property is owned by same owner, different names or corporations under them, but essentially the same owner. This did go to the Planning Commission as well on February twenty-second and voted five to zero to approve vacating of the described right-of-way based on petition of the applicant and providing a utility easement to ally energy. The Drake Restaurant has, through Genesee Industries, requested to vacate this, looking to expand their kitchen off of their existing building. And all right-of-way would go to the property, be tied to the property to the east, so it wouldn't be, remain as a separate lot. That covers it.
Anybody from the audience with any questions or concerns? I see none. Counsel?
Your Honor, a motion to amend. To amend a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling the alley running between Columbia Street, Washington Street, between Front Street and Main Street, Burlington, Iowa, to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration for adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance vacating and selling the alley running from Columbia Street to Washington Street between Front Street and Main Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Okay, let's take it. The vote, this is on the amendment.
Scott.
Hi.
Wilson.
Hi.
Davidson.
Hi.
Fleming.
Hi.
McCambell.
Hi.
Now, what's the vote as amended?
Scott.
Hi.
Wilson.
Hi.
Davidson.
Hi.
Fleming.
Hi.
McCambell.
Hi.
Your Honor, I move the approval of awarding contract for the twenty seventeen West Avenue and West Burlington Navita Roundabout Rice Project, RM oh nine seventy-seven six forty-three ninety twenty-nine.
Gregor.
Good evening. In front of you is a resolution approving the contract to award the West Avenue, West Burlington, excuse me, roundabout to Nelson Concrete for nine hundred and sixty-one thousand. Recommend approval. The estimate, engineering estimate, came in at one point three, so I was pretty excited to see it come underneath bid, underneath the estimate. Some of the things that I have in front of us here, I have a handout. I've been working on a lot of public education and PR-type materials for the roundabout to try and help educate people. Could you go to the one that's got both of them on there? This is a material that we're going to turn into a poster board that we're going to put down here in City Hall, but also at the library. We have a little QR code. I don't know if people still use those, but you can use that code reader and it takes it right to our website. On there, you see a map of how, you know, certain ways to drive around the roundabout, and then you also have a detour map. If you could go to the how to drive around. This is a piece of material that our city engineer put together describing the certain ways in which to drive around a roundabout, because I think sometimes it can be a little intimidating pulling up to one and understanding on how to use it. It also describes the large vehicles, emergency vehicles. I think the large vehicles is probably one of people's biggest concerns because of all the truck traffic. It is designed large enough to handle those trucks with the center apron being the area where the rear rails would go up on behind. If you go to the detour, this is probably the most recent information. I'll also talk about Facebook here in a second. But this is probably the most pressing need or concern for people. After assuming the awarding of contract, we would have a pre-con meeting next week between an April fifteenth and May first start date. The contract called for seventy-five working days, which is about three to four months, depending on weather. So Division Street is the designated detour. And I know we've talked about the other, the needs and the drives for Division Street having a lot of traffic flow. So this division or this detour will affect quite a few people. If you want to pull up the Facebook page. Recently, we've been posting this, the City of Burlington Facebook page, prior to, we never had a specific city page. As of recent, we've, we and the Community Development Parks Department have been posting on here. Our first, the Public Works part, the first one we posted was the roundabout. And we posted a link that dropped us back to the website. And the most recent one that we've posted on is the detour. So we've had some feedback, both positive and negative. But if you would now go to the webpage, this is where most of the information is housed, is on the city webpage. It's a little bit hidden underneath the project file, but we'll try and put that on the front page so people have an easily clickable link. So if you scroll down a little ways, we talked about the reasons for roundabout and how their reduction in major traffic accidents is one of the benefits. But if you, you can see there's a project description tab. If you click on the schedule, it shows this. Now, we've already done the bid letting, so we'll try and update these as regularly as we can. So for instance, now we don't know when the pre-con meeting would be or when the anticipated start date is. But we'll update that as we know more information. And then you could maybe do, that's just a map, and then the detour is also there. If you scroll back up for me, off to the right down here, there's some quick links from the Federal Highway Association, some other cities. And in the middle there, why city leaders choose roundabouts, is a video of the City of Johnston. They installed two roundabouts on some of their main thoroughfare. The reason I'm putting some of this on there is just to explain, other cities in the state of Iowa are using roundabouts and they are having success with them. I know that roundabouts are kind of a controversial item. People are intimidated by them, but you know, these are the reasons why it was chose here, and this is why we think it'll work here. Also, I know last time Jesse talked about an informational meeting. Actually, that's why I was talking back with Rhonda on setting the timeframe for that. I'm going to wait until we know when the pre-con is to set up a meeting for that and kind of go over the details and logistics of the roundabout. So. That was a lot more about the public education part than the actual awarding of contract, but I thought I should talk about that tonight, so. If there's any questions, I'll answer that on the bidding part and any of the dollars and cents stuff, too.
Any questions from anybody in the audience?
Thank you, Nick.
Okay, I see none. Counsel?
Obviously, I'm looking forward to this.
All right. Okay. Kathleen?
Scott.
Hi.
Wilson.
Hi.
Davidson.
Hi.
Fleming.
Hi.
McCambell.
Hi.
Your Honor, I approve the, I move to approve the adoption of the Personnel Manual for Non-Union Employees.
Stephanie Sticker.
So in the packet was the Personnel Manual for Non-Union Employees. It's effective July first, twenty seventeen. We do this annually. We update it. Basically, it's, what changes from year to year is the amount of increase that non-union employees will get. And that's on page two, and it's in here at a two point two five percent, which is the same as what the union employees are getting. And then also, the insurance has changed, Article seven, which is on page nine. Basically, the employees will contribute four percent to the cost of coverage, not to exceed thirty or sixty dollars per month for single and family. Other than that, all the other information in here is the same as the previous year.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Any questions?
Any questions from the audience? See none. Counsel? Thank you, Steph. Kathleen.
Scott.
Hi.
Wilson.
Hi.
Davidson.
Hi.
Fleming.
Hi.
McCambell.
Hi.
Your Honor, I move to approve of the consideration of plans and specs for the twenty seventeen flood mitigation public hearing to set on April seventeenth, twenty seventeen.
Leo Foley with Deanstrand Kim. Like we said, the April seventeenth, they have the public hearing. I was going to give you a presentation tonight about, kind of refresher more of what everything was and how it was going to do. So I'll come back next week on May tenth, or I'm sorry, April tenth, and do that for you. Couple of dates that are important. Receive bids, May tenth. Counsel to award, assuming we get a good award, could be May fifteenth. Notice to proceed, June thirtieth, after Steamboat Days. We met the Steamboat Days today and went over things like electrical, how they would do the power, some of that type of stuff, and also contingency plans. If a flood would hit during the construction, what would happen, those type of things. So we'll come to you next week with a PowerPoint presentation. The estimate, I think last time I was here, was around seven million. I think as of today, we're at six point seven million. So the, excuse me?
It's just come down another million and a half and we'll be okay.
That's right. We're hoping it comes down. We're hoping we get a good bid. With that, any questions?
Okay, thank you, Leo.
Thank you.
We'll see you next week. Okay. Is there anybody from the audience that has any concerns? Anything we haven't addressed? You may have any comments? Yes, sir?
Wait.
We have to vote on this motion.
Oh, we didn't do that? Sorry. Sorry about that. Hold on one second. Kathleen.
Scott.
Hi.
Wilson.
Hi.
Davidson.
Hi.
Fleming.
Hi.
McCambell.
Hi.
Now, you can come. Sorry about that.
Stuart Judd, sixty-two, sixty-four summer. And I'm kind of lost on what this gentleman's talking about. I don't even know what's, is that, you're talking about?
For the flood mitigation, for the flood wall?
Yeah, the flood wall. So I was just talking to a guy about it today and everything. I don't get the paper, okay? Too busy working, but anyway.
Next week, he's going to be doing a presentation doing the breakdown, so that'll be the meeting you want to catch. And you'll get every question you probably got is going to be answered.
and you'll get every, every question you probably got is gonna be answered tomorrow night.
Okay.
But, um, I'll say, I don't wanna go through and have him do-
Yeah, yeah.
-his presentation tonight, but, but yeah, pretty much any question, I would think, would be answered for you next week.
All right, thanks.
No problem. Anybody else from the audience? Mr. Shahean? You have contacts in tonight?
No.
All right. Can still see.
I got, I got my readers.
Okay.
Something related to a little pink notice I got with my water and sewer bill. I'm sure a lot of people have got these. My mom lives in Mount Pleasant, and I pay her bills for her. What she's paying $60 for over three months, I'm paying 150 on water and sewer. Your costs are out of control.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the audience? Mr. Williams? Get some new shoes, Mr. Williams?
Thanks for noticing, they're about a month and a half old, but that's okay.
Very shiny.
Larry Williams, 1567 Mason Lane. Uh, as a result of your vote, I have a comment. I would encourage the counsel to draft a resolution as quickly as possible. It offers an opportunity to either get a TIF or a rebate to the homeowner, so that it's available to the contractors, and they can pick and choose which way they wanna go on that. And then maybe we can get, uh, new developments going again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anybody else from the audience? Wanna say thank you? Mr. Tisland? Kathleen, do you got anything you wanna say? Lovely. Mrs. Wilson?
Can we put that, what we were talking about earlier, the policy, on for next work session? Should kind of talk about it, maybe get something, get some ideas figured out? If, if that would please the council.
I don't, I don't have any issue with that.
Would that be desirable for, would that something you'd want?
I don't, I-
Anybody that would want?
If the council, other council wants to talk about it, I'd talk about it.
All right.
Okay.
And then also, there's a ribbon cutting and an open house tomorrow at the Port of Burlington.
It's gonna be so fun.
Oh, my gosh, it's at 1:00 to 3:00. I, uh, was in there before they had everything done, and it was just completely empty, and I was like, "Oh, my gosh, what's happening?" So, it'll be really neat to see the finished product.
So, you haven't seen it yet?
No.
Let me tell you what it looks like?
No.
I haven't seen it yet, either doesn't matter. Nothing else?
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Scott? FedEx, contractor come to me today, and he has to replace a, a section of sidewalk because they put in new sewer. And he said he has to put it in 50 inches wide, and he says, they said, "Why is that?" And he says, "You can thank Councilman Scott for that." And I said, "Yeah, that was me." I would like to see us revisit that with some common sense, in that when you're replacing one section of sidewalk, 48 is what the ADA requires, 48 inches. The reason we went to 50 inches is because we're at a point where we're telling developers they have to tear out their sidewalks because they're 47 and a half inches wide instead of 48. That's because that's what ADA requires. I think if we, you know, uh, if we were to, uh, rewrite that in a way that on existing sidewalks, when you've gotta replace a panel or two, that it can be 48 inches minimum, and new constructions, stay with the 50 inch to ensure they, because if you have to take one panel out and replace it because you're at 47 and 3/4, it's not like having to take out 80 or 100 feet of sidewalk to satisfy a frontage. Though I should've thought of that when we were gonna get. If we can put that on for a discussion item in the future, it'd be much appreciated. Sounds good. Anything else?
I'm just gonna do one tonight, I guess, uh, I got a phone call from, uh, from a citizen, and they, they have issue with the, uh, the water bill. He said his issue isn't with the bill, he understands what the bill is going to be, and his issue isn't even with the, uh, the fee that they have for door tagging. He just wants to know when it's going to be and wish it could be on there. And the answer I got was, um, they can't do that because it's a period of a couple of days where they go tag houses, and it may, they may plan on getting to it on Monday, it may take Tuesday when they get to it. But, here's, here's what they gave me that I, that I do wanna pass on, I think it'll be good information, is Wednesdays are the days that they do disconnections, and they always tag the houses a week before disconnections. So, that, anybody that is looking for some answers, I, that, that's the best I can give you for right now. I did pass that information on, 'cause I understand that people are having some issue with that. But, uh, if that'll help anybody, at least it'll, at least it'll give you some, uh, a foundation there. But, it's Wednesdays before, on your, check the month of your, of your bill. It's the Wednesdays before disconnection that they send out the, uh, that they'll put the placards up, and if they have to come to your house, you are going to get the fee, so, uh, just try to be mindful of that. And Shane is going to be getting back with me and, and giving me some more information on that, so. I think I'll, I'll stop right there. I do, I do wanna say, uh, to Mr. Nagraki that, um, I hope you don't, uh, I hope you don't give up and, and take this as a gut punch, because, uh, we need you and what you're doing in this community, so.
Mayor Proton?
I'm done.
Mr. Fleming?
I'm done at this time.
But you reserve the right to be undone.
I do.
And I recognize that.
All the favors, say aye.
I don't have anything for tonight.
Okay.
You guys in the back row, you have anything? Nope? Okay.
Can I get a motion?
What? Oh, I moved that we adjourn at this time.
Second.
Kathleen?
I wasn't paying attention, I'm sorry.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye. This means adjourn. Thank you, everybody, goodnight.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, counsel. Thank you, Jim.